At this point in time, we'll move forward with our contested school board race, which is Cobb County School Board Post Two, which has Dr. Jahah Howard and Angela Presley. At this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and start with our opening statements. Opening statements, we'll first open a statement, we'll go to Ms. Presley. You have two minutes.
Thank you.
Or three minutes, my apologies.
Thank you, Michael, and our audience this evening. My name is Angela Presley, and I am your candidate for Cobb County Board of Education, Post Two. I'm an 11-year resident of Cobb County. I'm the current president of the Kiwanis Club of Greater South Cobb, where I oversee 14 schools, including the Boys and Girls Club, where I am a volunteer teacher. My master's degree is from George Washington University in Issues and Crises Management, which I use daily in my business of PR for 22 years. I'm here running for this post because I have such a great desire to see children succeed. I believe kids deserve the best education that we can give them, and I will ask all my parents and teachers and our community leaders to join me in supplemental education through parental involvement and community engagement to give our kids the confidence they need to succeed. I will fight for the resources so that our capital improvements are done on time and to spec. I will empower, work to empower kids in the schools so they build community and they are a source for each other when they're struggling with various issues in life. I also will champion academic achievement early on in pre-K so that our kids have the building blocks to succeed when they get to middle and high school. I will ask you, I'd ask you to vote for me on May 22nd during the primary, Press Presley on May 22nd. My name is Angela Presley, and I am your candidate for Cobb County Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Dr. Howard, you may proceed with your opening statement.
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Jahah Howard. I'm just thrilled to be here, representing myself and my family. I'm married with 10 years. We have three children, a seven, five, and three-year-old, and two of them are in the Cobb County school system. We're just really excited to be able to work in on behalf of not only our kids, but all of the kids in our area and all of the kids in our county. I just want to pause and make sure that we are on the same page of the scope of what's happening here. Cobb County Schools, we're talking about 112,000 children, the second-largest school system in the state of Georgia. We're talking about a budget of over $1 billion. We're talking about seven board members who are doing their best to manage a school system that has a diversity and ethnicity. When it comes to ethnicity, we're talking about a third Caucasian, a third African-American, and a third Hispanic in other ethnicities. This is the temperature. This is what's going on in our communities. And if you funnel this down to what's happening specifically in Post Two, in the area of Smyrna and Mableton areas, our schools are going through a lot right now. We are doing some really good things well, but we're also dealing with a lot of overcrowding. It's a popular area to be in Cobb County, and it's a real issue. And there's one candidate here who's been on the ground, working for years, working with principals, PTAs, to deal with these issues specifically when it comes to SLOST, when it comes to working hand-in-hand with previous school board member. We've been at it. We've been at it, and I'm really excited to continue this work as your school board member. We have a philosophy of building bridges, building bridges between the community and the schools, building bridges between our community and the board, and also building bridges between the board and other governmental agencies. Lord knows, if you can talk to any parents or talk to anybody for long enough about our schools, folks will ask a question, are people talking to one another? Do the Board of Commissioners talk to the Board of Education? Does the Board of Education talk to the city officials? And too oftentimes, we're working in our own silos, and we're going to do something about that. We're already doing something about it, and let's make it official on May 22nd.
Great, thank you, Dr. Howard. The first question is actually deals with something that you alluded to when you talked about the size of the budget of Cobb County Schools. So this first question I would like to ask to Ms. Presley, and the question would be, what is your experience with authorizing, preparing, and managing budgets as it would relate to being a school board member with a budget the size of the Cobb County School Board District?
Well, I do think that with a budget the size of $1.2 billion, that we would have to have accountability. So not only would I be looking at that budget to be sure that it's in line with our priorities, but as a school board member, I would assign at least three people to the committee so that we're looking at all, the full scope, based on our priorities, to be able to ascertain and follow the ball and where our monies go as regards to the school system. We do know that Governor Deal, he fully funded the QBE. We also know the QBE is underfunded for Cobb County because we pay more in taxes to our state board, and we receive less than some of the schools. And so, we would be looking, I would be looking to add to our $1.2, $1.23 billion.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Howard, same question, we'll go to you.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, the question would be, what is your experience in preparing, creating, and managing budgets as it would relate to you being a school board member?
Sure. I have the honor of being a pediatric dentist and a business owner in the Smyrna area. Being a practice owner, I know firsthand how important it is to not only have a budget, but manage a budget, and being aware of dollars going in and out to make sure that we're operating efficiently and making sure that we're in line with our goals, in line with our mission statement, and making sure that everything that we're doing is coinciding with what we're designed to do. So, I've had daily practice. We celebrated seven years in March of being a business owner, and when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to building, when it comes to people, when it comes to having the same team, same goal, and all those things that you want to look at as a business owner, I can bring that to the table on the board to make sure that we're looking at this billion-dollar budget with the same type of eyes.
Great, thank you. And I'll keep the line of questioning with you, Dr. Howard. What would be your single largest or single initial focus if you won this election and became the school board member? What thing would you focus on first?
Sure. I'll give one general, communication, communication. The area proposed to, Smyrna and Mableton areas, Campbell High and Osborne High feeder schools, we've been dealing with the history of not feeling adequate communication and listen, make sure that the rest of the county is listening to our area. We want to make sure that as we have tens of millions of dollars of projects coming our way, that the residents, that the schools, that the kids and the parents, that they know exactly what's happening. So what you'll notice is that when we become, when I become school board member, we'll be instituting a, every quarter, we'll have quarterly town hall meetings with our constituents to make sure that we're listening to our students, make sure we're listening to our neighbors. And when we build those bridges with the communication between community and our schools, you're going to also see that stronger schools are going to mean stronger communities. So as our schools improve, you're going to see jobs continue to come to our area. You're going to see nonprofits and for-profits working together with our schools to make it better.
Great, thank you. And the same question, Ms. Presley. As this election has unfolded, there's only two Democrats that are in this election, which is you two, and there's no Republican that is qualified for the seat, which means one of you two, next year this time, will be the school board member for the post. So the question to you is, if you were a school board member this year, next year this time, what would be your first priority and what would you get to work on first?
Well, I believe that what our current Post Two is struggling with right now is resources. We have to build resources for our kids. We have to be sure that when we say we're going to build a school, that no matter what it takes, that we get the land to build the schools, because the environment that our kids are learning in has to be state-of-the-art in order for them to compete globally. We have to build, I would be building partnerships within the community like Kiwanis and Rotary and the Optimist Club, where we're supplementing education where the budget is at a shortfall. And I would continue, of course, educating the parents. I think parental involvement is a key issue as well, engaging the parents through educating them and letting them know what their options are for being better parents and being more engaged with their students or their children. In addition, I would be looking at greater partnerships to, so that we can address some of the, we could address some of the transancy in our school for the lack of affordable housing and for the lack of jobs being here, so workforce development.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. So, I myself happen to live in this post, and I have my children here tonight who go to schools on Harmley-Leland Elementary School. So it should be no surprise to anyone that schools throughout the posts are overcrowded. What I would like to know is, what is your specific plan to address the need that we have throughout the post with all of the schools and the overcrowding issues that are there? Ms. Presley, I'll go to you first.
Well, now that the QBE is fully funded, and as I said before, we don't quite have what we put in, what we'll have to do, what I would have to do, is be sure that where the schools are over or undersized in classroom, in other words, if there's not enough children in those classrooms, but there are overcrowding in others, then we switch our human resources to the place where they're most needed, and that's how I would address that. But I would work with the state legislators so that we could have more funding coming from the resource that we invest in.
A point of clarity there, are you suggesting that if there are undercrowding in certain schools, that we send those students to the school where there's less crowding?
No, I mean that in areas where we have more teachers than, that is currently needed, that we would send those teachers to the schools where it is overcrowding. But as the QBE is fully funded, we would have to build, of course, more classroom space, i.e. building, buildings to accommodate the students. And so, as I mentioned about the resources, we have to be sure that those resources are there, that we find the land, that we find that the resources and the capital improvements, that we make those to accommodate those students. And then we move human resources to the places where there's undercrowding, and so it's balanced and equitable for all of the schools in the district.
Great, thank you. Dr. Howard, same question. Obviously, there's overcrowding with our high schools, I think particularly the high schools and within the post. What would be your specific plan to address the issue of overcrowding?
Thank you for your question. First, we got to acknowledge that there is a sense of urgency here. I'm listening to my opponent, and I'm hearing about QBE. That $10 million that came to Cobb County, it's spent on a 1% raise for our teachers. So QBE, that money's done for the year. When it comes to looking at land, we've looked at land. We know that there's very limited usable, purchasable land in our area. So this is, again, years down the road. When it comes to SLOST, we've been in that fight. We've gotten it approved. We are working on it now. So there's a sense of urgency to work on it now. So, sitting in a Campbell High School council meeting with parents and the principal and Dr. Walker and others, we were able to look at the plans for SLOST V for the additions for Campbell High School, and we were not happy with the initial plans that came down from the school board, because we talked about the urgency, where a kid's going to go, we need portables. Now, you have to find out where the portable's going to go. It's going to take some coordination with the city to make sure that we have the usable land that we have to have portables there, to make sure kids are still safe, and then make sure that we are working hard to make sure that the SLOST V money and renovations for Campbell and the rebuild for Osborne is done on time, and just know that we will be there with, not only myself, but the community at large will be there to make it happen.
Great, thank you. So the next question I have is a rather open one, but I'm going to leave it a little open on purpose, and that question is a general thought on your feeling about the effectiveness or use of charter schools here in Cobb County. Dr. Howard, I'll go to you first.
Sure. In general, I believe charter schools are good for a laboratory, they kind of test out new ideas, try new techniques. However, I'm a strong public school advocate, and at no point should our charter schools be advanced to the detriment of our public schools. So, in our area, we have a public charter school, and the teachers there are working very hard, the parents are working really hard from all over the county, and our students are working hard, and I know many of them on a very personal level. I think they're doing a great job. However, I think it's important to know that, continue trying new ideas, support them, but not at the detriment to our neighborhood schools, because I truly believe that our local public schools anchor communities, and as our schools get better, our communities get better.
Great, thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, same question to you. Could you please give us your overall thought about the effectiveness and efficiency of part of charter schools and whether you support them in Cobb County?
So, I am not opposed to charter schools. Parents make decisions based on their child's needs. What my issue would be, if charter schools took away from the resources for public schools, then that's where I would have a problem. You know, 112,000 students, and so, not one size fits all, and so, we have charter, we have magnet. Some of those programs, they provide a balance from us, for us. We can learn from them, they can learn from us. But my goal would be to make our public schools so great that where people would be clamoring to get into them and making applications for them, and I believe that we can get there. I believe that our public schools hold a huge, huge potential, and I won't stop until we can have our graduation rates at 90% for our, for any school in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Presley, I appreciate that. So next question is, I think a question that's been asked to our earlier candidate, but what, what do you think, or where do you think specifically that funds could be, or I'll rephrase this question, where do you think within our operating budget for the Cobb County School District that we could be more efficient with spending those funds? Dr. Howard, I'll go to you.
Sure. I believe that our capital projects, I believe that we need classroom space, we need gymnasiums, we need performing arts. If you look at the budget, though, of some of our rebuilds and some of our renovations, I really think that if we are honest with ourselves, we can save a couple million here, save a couple million there, and that can go to teacher resources, that can go to making sure that our teachers have more resources and more, and more support, and just keeping the main thing the main thing. At the end of the day, our kids are there to be educated, and we want to make sure that's our first priority. It's not an easy answer, but I want to give you a specific answer to that question, to where we can find a little money. The overall goal is to increase our revenue and to find streams of income when it comes to increasing our individual foundations for our schools, building off of what we're doing with SLOST, to see other opportunities for specific areas who are in urgent need, such as the South Cobb area. So we look forward to working on those, on those issues to increase our revenue as well.
Great, thank you. Ms. Presley, same question. We all have finite resources to deal with, and obviously, funding is one of those. So the question is, what area specifically within the Cobb County School District budget would you look at as a way of trying to, not necessarily save money, but in ways that could be more effective?
Well, in speaking with teachers, what they've told me is, there's duplication in some of the curriculum and curriculum that they're using in the classroom. As our previous candidate mentioned, they, we're changing the curriculum every three or four years, and that might not be a problem, except that the waste that comes from that change, and I think that we can maybe tighten that up just a little bit to save some money. But again, I will stress, the issue is finding additional resources, and the Smyrna Foundation has been really good in finding additional resources to support the things that we need in the community, and what I would like to do is work with them so that all of our schools have foundation, and so there's, where there's not so much concern about that shortfall as well. I mentioned my background is public relations, and so, the corporate citizenship, being able to supplement education, I think is really critical that our community come and supplement, as we do with Kiwanis.
Great, thank you. The next question is, we all know Cobb County is part of the larger Atlanta metro area, which is a growing global city, which makes Cobb County part of that global entity. So the question for you guys would be, what are we doing within our school system to ensure that our students are able to compete globally, and specifically whether it's in the curriculum or additional activities that they're involved in? But what would you do and what would you push for, champion for as a member of the school board to ensure that our kids are ready for the 21st century as a global student? Mr. Howard?
I think that's a wonderful question. Several years ago, through our, through my practice, we started a parents group called Wave of Excellence, and that parents group grew from a handful of parents to 50 parents, 1,000 parents, to almost 4,000 parents. And I can say that it was because of the parents, when we got organized, that's why you see dual-language immersion in our elementary schools, at Smyrna Elementary and now Nikajak Elementary. To be prepared for the world, we have to be able to speak another language, to be able to interact and communicate with one another fluently and effectively. And we can, and as your school board member, you can bet that we'll be pushing for more resources for dual-language immersion and making sure that a foreign language is taken seriously so that our kids are ready for the next level.
Great, thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, the same question to you. What would you do as a school board member to ensure that our children are ready to go out and compete, not only across the state and country, but across the world?
I actually believe our children have the answer to that. Our children, we can't imagine where they will be in the next 20 to 25 years, and I would seriously consider speaking with our children to see what their interests are for the future. I believe they give us all the cues. In addition, there are corporations who take on kids as mentors, and so, giving them opportunities to have real-world experience. I often, and during the summers, I hire young, young people to help me in my business, and so I'm teaching them writing and other skills so that they're able to compete. With my Boys and Girls Club, I start to see and test what their interests are, to give them that foundation of where they'd like to be, and from there, they're going to tell us, they're going to inform us what the future will look like.
Great, thank you, Ms. Presley. So the next question would be, one of the largest challenges, or what are the largest challengers that our teachers face today, and what would you do as a school board member to try to alleviate that issue of pain or issue? Dr. Howard?
I have the support of a lot of teachers, because we've been working together on the ground level for many years in this area, and I can tell you that I hear repeatedly that it's not about money, it's about feeling respected and allowing them to do their job. Our teachers need more support practically when it comes to just people to maybe go do, run some copies of different paper or go help with supplies, so that they can do what they've been dreaming about doing oftentimes for their whole lives, is teach kids. And so, as their school board member, they're going to have a school board member that not only is going to appreciate them for a week, as this is Teacher Appreciation Week, but you'll have somebody that appreciates them as a lifestyle, and this is what we do in honoring our teachers for the service that they give.
Great, thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, same question to you.
Next to parents, teachers have the most important job in the world, and as such, we should reward them. We have to find ways to reward our teachers. In the schools, these teachers go back for post-secondary, most of them have PhDs, and I've seen a gentle way in which they speak to their, to their classrooms that are overcrowded. And so, on a daily, and on a, on a daily basis, I think teachers need to be recognized. That's something that we should be rewarding them for daily, and the only way we can do that is to get those resources, to alleviate that, to hire more teachers so that when the classrooms are crowded, they don't feel the burden of that, or find other ways in the budget to reward, to reward them. I think that in action, we reward them when we give them what they need to live on.
Great, thank you. All right, so this next set of questions, we're going to, we're going to raise it up a little more. It has to do with some of the more social issues that are not only going on within Cobb County, but across the country today. So the first question would be, what would you do to mitigate the risk of a school shooting happening within our Cobb County Schools? Ms. Presley?
Well, I am really happy that our public, Cobb Public Safety has implemented the alert point, and so that every, every faculty member will have a badge, including the cleaning staff and building staff. And so, that will alert them of a, an issue with, within the school. But I believe that our student body has to be empowered. We've seen the things that happened in Parkland. That was an inside job. Our kids need more support. We have to build community within our kid, within our schools, so that our kids are able to recognize when their peers are in trouble and be a support system for them. At a certain point, there's this phenomenon called chumship. Kids start to look to their peers for validation, and when they don't get it, they act out in ways, self-destructive ways. So rather than having gangs, we build community and leadership so that our kids are able and trained to recognize when they're peers and be able to support them.
Great, thank you, Ms. Presley. Dr. Howard, same question to you, sir.
Sure. I appreciate my opponent's comments there, just sitting at Campbell High School for a community meeting to address safety before the student walkout. They brought up those very points that you mentioned, and it's nice to have technology, but it's also nice to have men and women in our service, and men and women, service members who, who really care about our kids, and they're really good at their jobs. When it comes to public safety, they're ready, and they're ready to protect us. And there's another good point that she made about listening to our children. That's why an initiative that you'll see out of me is a Student Leadership Council, and it'll start in Post Two, but hopefully, we'll make it a county-wide thing, where we'll have high school students and middle school students from around the area to educate us on what's happening when it comes to social issues and the pressures, so that we can better understand. If we do more listening, maybe it won't be just our kids getting the education, but also board members.
Great, thank you. To lead into the next question, I heard both of you mention about empowering youth and about listening to our students. However, we both know that, or we all know that after the Parkland shooting, there was a different, there was a difference in the way that the Marietta City Schools versus the Cobb County Schools handled the student's walkouts. As it relates to, we should listen to students when they want to make their voices heard, question is, how would you have handled that situation of the student walkout after the Parkland shooting? And I'll go to Ms. Presley, you first.
I believe that it was very touching to see the kids care about each other, that they wanted to stand in solidarity. And so, with that in mind, showing the kids and consulting with public safety to find out the best way to do that in the interest and safety of the kids is what I would have been able to do and what I would do in that situation, so that kids do learn leadership. They are our leaders of tomorrow, and unfortunately, we don't have the, we can't afford to wait to show them, because our world has changed such that we have issues like this. And so, the more prepared they are to deal with situations like the Parkland and the walkout, I think the better off we would be, and the better off they will be, would be in knowing that someone validates and values who they are and what they're trying to do.
Thank you. I'll ask you a follow-up to that, to be specific. Would you support our students if they decided to walk out, or would you subject them to a punishment? And if so, what would that punishment be?
I would not punish kids for trying to express their First Amendment right. Absolutely not. I believe that part of the curriculum could be to, for civic engagement, and so, I don't believe that punishment is a just, a just effect for them wanting to express their solidarity. And so, I believe that it just takes planning, but they should be able to express themselves with a, what, 10-minute walkout? Eight minutes? Seven? Not much.
Great, thank you. Dr. Howard, going back to the original question.
I absolutely support our students and the way that they express themselves. It was powerful. It was moving, and to hear the testimony from parents who were there and hear the testimony from some of my own patients who participated in it, I can just be hopeful that when my children are high schoolers, that they would be brave enough to, brave enough to, you know, even if it means breaking a rule, to stand up for what's right. And my heart is warm and hopeful and optimistic for the future of our state and the future of our county because of children, because of the students. of our county because of children, because of the students. It was just amazing, it was amazing. So I absolutely stand with them. And our superintendent would have had a nice, we would have had a nice conversation about that decision.
Great, thank you for that. All right, this next question deals with some of the types of education our children receive. There are two basic types of sex education classes which are taught, and it depends on the specific school district mandates. A teen could either be, will be learning comprehensive educate, comprehensive sexuality education or abstinence-only until marriage program. These programs represent two completely different schools of thought. Which do you feel should be taught in Cobb County schools?
Sure, I can take that. Ms. Presley?
So our, our student body represents a lot of different groups. And so I believe that we have to accommodate all groups. I believe that full sex education needs to be taught in school as well as abstinence because those are two differing, differing positions that come from parents and students. And so all of them have to be explored.
Great, thank you. Dr. Howard, same question, sir.
I believe in a comprehensive sex education. That may include abstinence as an option, but also be very clear about various ways to be effective. Research is pretty clear that abstinence-only programs are not very effective. So I think that we should be very comprehensive in being mindful of our student population and our families.
Great, thank you. I skipped over this question, but I think I'll go back to it. But as Democrats, I, I feel I know where we're going to be with this question, but I'll ask it anyway. Do either of you believe in arming teachers as a way to protect our students from our schools? Dr. Howard?
I am absolutely against the solution of arming teachers to protect our students. If we want to arm them with anything, let's make sure we arm them with proper resources and support so they can do effectively what they were trained to do, teach and educate.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, question to you.
I am absolutely against arming teachers to protect our kids. As I said, there are other ways to train and have people prepared. We have the on-school officers already. We might need a couple more of those, but definitely that should not fall to the hands of teachers. They're already burdened with testing and the other responsibilities they have. To add that to their plate is just, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't make sense. And what I would say is that we would have triangular empathy training for our officers, our teachers and our student body so that each of them gets an understanding of where the other stands. So, because I believe when we arm them with education and how to protect each other and how to prevent these things in the first place, I think that's a better approach rather than guns.
Thank you. Within the Cobb County Democratic Committee, one of our sayings, almost a slogan, is that diversity is our advantage. With that said, what would be your plan to infuse more diversity awareness into Cobb County schools in the areas around faith, race, and gender? Dr. Howard?
I mentioned earlier about having quarterly public meetings and just being more creative and engaging with our communities. And part of our platform when it comes to building bridges between the community and the schools, we absolutely are finding ways to make sure that we understand that we are a diverse group of people. Like you mentioned, in faith, in ethnicity, in income, which means that we have a unique opportunity to embrace those things and actually be better citizens because of it. We are uniquely positioned to be the best that Georgia has to offer. And I look forward to building those bridges and intentionally finding ways to work through those tense moments. Because anytime you have differences, you're going to have increased intense moments. But ultimately, we'll grow from it and be better because of it.
Great. Follow on to that, Dr. Howard. Would, would you take more of a reactive approach or proactive? And, and give me an example of which.
Sure, proactive approach, absolutely. In my profession, you better get to it early on before the problem finds you. And I really believe in that wholeheartedly when it comes to finding solutions. Cobb County is ready for a diversity officer, starting at the head. We need to send a strong signal to the central staff and a song, a strong signal to the rest of the county that diversity matters. And having a professional and a team of people who can help us to implement, implement the best strategies for that. There are people who are highly trained, who know what they're doing. And, and within the context of Cobb County, we can do a great work together.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, the same question. What would your plan be to infuse more diversity awareness into Cobb County schools in the area of faith, race, and gender?
So we already have, of course, a diverse community. And so at this point, it, it is incumbent upon us to reach out. In 2015, I did a community engagement survey. It included Spanish as a part of the survey so that Spanish-speaking people could understand as well as English. And I believe that when we reach out in a relative to a community and the language that they speak, whether it's Spanish or messages that surround their religion, it, it is telling the story that we are inclusive. And so everything that we do has to include all groups and not exclude those groups. And, and that way, we're being practical in solving the issues around diversity.
Great, thank you. Last question is a simple one. What makes you the best candidate for our next school board for this post? Dr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I operate with a unique sense of urgency. I am in the community, I feel with the community, I engage the community, and I understand that I'm not the answer, but we are the answer. I know that at this time, I'm supposed to talk about how great I am compared to Ms. Presley. I respect her tremendously, she's doing a great work. But we have a track record of working together. We've done amazing things together in the Smyrna area, and we look forward to building on that and opening that up into the Osborne and Mableton areas as well.
Thank you. Ms. Presley, key to winning these campaigns is to highlight your character, contrast between you and your opponent. Would you mind telling us why you are uniquely qualified to be the next school board member for this district?
I mentioned that I'm the president of the Kiwanis Club of Greater South Cobb, overseeing 14 schools, including the Boys and Girls Club where I volunteer teach. My record speaks for itself. I spend 50 hours a month in the cause of kids. I'm not paid for that. And, and, and so that speaks to my passion for children. I, I firmly believe that every child should have the best access to education because I believe in children. And I have been doing the work, I am doing the work now. I will only extend that work. One of the things that I'm proud about is the early intervention programs that we had at one of the schools wherein. We were able to practically raise the, the math scores between 150 to 200% just through supplemental education. If that doesn't say that I'm committed, I don't know what else does. I'm here for our, our children, our community. I cannot do it alone, and I don't want to do it alone. I want to be informed by my constituents, and I will be.
Thank you, Ms. Presley.
Thank you.
This would bring us to the end. However, I, I do feel there's, there's one more question that we do need to, to ask that I did not bring up, which we asked to, to the previous county school board member. What is your thought around teaching intelligent design versus evolution in our schools? Ms. Presley?
Intelligent design versus education. As I mentioned earlier, we have a diverse group of people. We mentioned religion, we mentioned the LBGQI, we mentioned all of these. We mentioned Latino, blacks, whites. None of us are the same. No one person is the same. And so to be fair for everyone, I believe that we should offer options for education. The more informed our kids are, the more informed they can make critical decisions for themselves. And what I would foster is critical thinking on any issue. That's what I would recommend.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Dr. Howard, same question to you, sir.
It is not the school's responsibility to teach religious doctrine. And I'm a believer and an intelligent designer and in divi, in divinity. As you know, my faith is extremely important to me. And I can tell you wholeheartedly that the role of public education is not to teach what we would be teaching Sunday morning, Sunday school, or Wednesday night Bible study. We can leave that for those in the faith community to discuss that and for people to do at home. When it comes to our public education, it is not their responsibility.
Great, Dr. Howard, appreciate that. So we'll now move into our closing statements, and I think, Ms. Presley, you opened first, correct? So Dr. Howard, we'll go to you for your closing statement, sir.
Sure. I just really appreciate this opportunity, I really, really do. I'm, when I'm up here, I think about the number of parents who communicate with me on a very personal level and say, if it were not for the parents group that you helped start years ago, I would have moved to a different county. I would have, I didn't, I, I love Smyrna, I love Mableton, but if it were not for what I think I see happening, I would have moved. And that's the power of community. That's the power of building bridges. So instead of having idle playground talk and rumors circulating about everything bad my family has heard, we're going to build off what we've been doing in the community, finding a platform to make sure a community can build and learn from one another. So go our schools, go our communities. And our, and our area is growing, it is a place that people want to be. And it's, and it's, and a big part of that is because our schools serve as the anchor and a foundation to that. Also, just know that in me, in, in me as a candidate, in me as a future school board member, I bring a perspective and an approach that really brings people together and also looks at things in a, in a more comprehensive way. Right now, we're dealing with overcrowding, we're dealing with traffic, we're dealing with people building hundreds of high-end apartment complexes and, and areas that is already hard to have any thoroughway, and our schools are already overcrowded, they're being built brand-new and opening over capacity. That's a problem. And you will have in me, someone who is going to be vocal about these things. And also someone who's going to shine a flashlight on the things that happen in the shadows, the people who are in the shadows. So I look forward to working together with you. We're going to build stronger schools, and our schools will no longer be an afterthought.
Great, thank you, Dr. Howard. Ms. Presley, please proceed with your closing statement.
I have a vision for our schools in post two. My vision is that we would address the issues that impede education. Those issues being transancy, affordable housing, those is, issues being a lack of access to resources that we need to build more schools, to alleviate the crowding in the classroom. My vision is that we'll have a public school so strong that people will clamor, that will, that our, that our post will be coveted among all, that businesses will want to relocate here because we have the best workforce, that we've developed the best workforce, and our children will be beneficiaries of that. That is my vision for this school, for this post. That is what I've been doing, using my 50 hours I have been dedicated and committed to our kids. Just based on, I have been committed and dedicated to the education of our kids, and I want to continue that on the board, as, on the board seat.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you both for your dedication to the community, for stepping up and being willing to serve as our next school board member. Thank you, good luck in the primaries.